All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We want to welcome you to the June 4th Durango City Council meeting. We're happy to have you all here, and for those of you joining us on D-Gov, welcome. As I start, I want to remind all citizens that as a council, we support the efforts of the Durango Community Relations Commission, and as a council, we adopted the Civility First pledge program. This program encourages social harmony for all residents and visitors, and expects that people are treated with civility and respect. So we run our meetings accordingly and operate under this pledge. I'd like to welcome everybody to anybody to participate tonight in our meeting. We have a couple options for public participation. We have public participation, and we'll have a public hearing tonight. So if you'd like to speak at either of those, please feel free to join us and sign up on the signup sheet below. We have a couple proclamations, but first we'll start with the roll call, please. Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Baxter?
Here.
Counselor Bettine?
Here.
Counselor Dasworthy?
Present.
Mayor Po Tim Broke?
Here.
And Mayor Youssef?
Here. Moving on to our proclamations, we have two proclamations and one presentation tonight. We're gonna start with our proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month, and I'd like to invite Executive Director of the Companeros, Mr. Matt Cargood here to accept. Just before I get up there, I'm gonna say a special word. We have a special guest in the audience today. We have a former mayor, sweetie Marbury, and she's gonna join me at the podium and read this proclamation with me.
Oh, nice. And thank you for this honor, Mayor Youssef.
Yes.
Immigrant Heritage Month, June 2019. Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, and whereas immigrants continue to grow businesses, innovate, strengthen our economy, and create American jobs, and whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but have also campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans, and whereas despite these countless contributions, the role of immigrants in building and enriching our nation has frequently been overlooked and undervalued throughout our history and continues to the present day.
Now therefore I, Melissa Youssef, as Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Immigrant Heritage Month.
Thank you very much. I'm the Executive Director of Companeros Four Corners Immigrant Resource Center. We're a nonprofit in the area that is dedicated to serving and empowering the immigrant community of the four corners. We're just overjoyed that Durango has decided to officially honor Immigrant Heritage Month. A little background on Immigrant Heritage Month, it is an initiative by a political action group called FORWARD. It began in 2014 and was officially recognized by President Obama in 2016, the purpose being to recognize the contributions and achievements to American society and culture by immigrants. Now, in this day and age of controversy surrounding the issue of immigration, I think it's important that we all remember that we too are descended from immigrants. Aside from a small part of the population, all of us have parents or grandparents or great-grandparents, or some more further than that came from another country. That's something to be proud of. I wore something today that is similar to traditional garb that my grandparents in Korea would wear. On my mother's side, my mother was adopted from Korea following the Korean War. And on my father's side, my parents, my father's great-grandparents immigrated from Poland in 1917 fleeing the destruction of World War I. Both of my sides of my family come from somewhere else if you go back far enough, as is the case with probably most of the people in this room. Immigrants today continue to offer a lot of things for our society, for our economy. If you go in the back of any restaurant or hotel here, you hear Spanish and other languages. It's clear that we need a system that works for everyone. That's why FORWARD is working to push for comprehensive immigration reform that would create a path to citizenship for the undocumented folks living in this country, as well as make the system better overall going forward. I would urge all of us to keep that in mind, to keep in mind the fact that we all are ultimately descended from immigrants when we decide to use our political voice for change, whether it's to push legislation for amnesty for immigrants, or whether it's to push for representatives who will put their voices in our government to make the changes we need. Because in the end, we're all in this together. So, thank you very much for doing this, Durango. Thank you on behalf of being a great community, and thank you on behalf of myself as an individual, as someone who's proud to be descended from immigrants.
With the mayor?
Sure, with the mayor. Let's stand next to each other.
Sure. One, two, three, click. There you go.
Thank you very much. What should, are you guys keeping this, or do?
You keep it.
I keep it, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mayor Marbury. Okay, next I would like to know if Robin Halloran with the Moms Demand Action Chapter lead would like to join me at the podium. Thank you. We are now going to read a proclamation for Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days, June 7th through June 9th, 2019. And this was a bit of a long one, so bear with me, but it is a very important one. Whereas gun violence and gun accidents touch all segments of our society, impacting people of all ages, increasing the probability of fatalities and incidents of domestic violence or road rage, raising the death toll in intentional and unintentional shootings, and among those who attempt suicide, and placing children and young people at increased risk, and whereas maintaining the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes in unison with keeping guns away from those who should not have access to them, and whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Days will take place across the country on the weekend of June 7th through 9th to encourage a public commitment to work together to support and find solutions to save lives from gun violence and to honor individuals and communities impacted by gun violence by wearing orange, a color long associated with gun safety that symbolizes the value of human life, and whereas to honor all those whose lives have been cut short by gun accidents or gun violence, the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, the families who have lost loved ones to gun violence, and the communities and schools where mass shootings have occurred. A national coalition of organizations has annually designated National Gun Violence Awareness Days on the first weekend of June, and whereas anyone can honor this movement by pledging to wear orange on June 7th through 9th to help raise awareness of gun violence and to honor the lives and lost human potential of those whose lives have been taken or forever changed by gun violence, and whereas we want to renew our commitment to reducing gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children and our communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Melissa Youssef, Mayor of the City of Durango, on behalf of City Council hereby declare June 7th through 9th, 2019 to be the third annual Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days, to honor and remember victims and survivors of gun violence and encourage our citizens, businesses, organizations, and agencies to work collaboratively to support our local community's efforts to prevent tragic efforts of gun violence and honor the value of life. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
I would. So as the chapter lead for Moms Demand Action for Durango, I wanted to just give a little bit of background around Moms Demand was created, much alike Mothers Against Drunk Driving, to reduce drunk driving. We were created to advocate for stronger laws and policies that will reduce gun violence and save lives. We're a nonpartisan grassroots movement of American moms, dads, brothers, sisters, we're all in it together. This Friday, June 7th, is National Gun Violence Awareness Day and the beginning of Wear Orange Weekend. This is a weekend dedicated to honoring the lives of, like Melissa said, the lives of Americans affected by gun violence and elevating the voice of every American who demands an end to gun violence. When we wear orange this weekend, it's for the victims and survivors in Virginia Beach and countless other Americans who have been affected by gun violence. We don't have to live like this. We need to get involved. Come to Buckley Park this Sunday for a day of celebration to honor the survivors of gun violence from 2:00 to 4:00. Local organizations will be participating who are involved in public safety. We will have local survivors speaking, and Pete Giuliani has agreed to play music for us. More than 700 Wear Orange events will take place across the country this weekend, show up and demand to be heard. Our hearts are with the victims of Virginia Beach, their families and loved ones, and all those affected by this tragic shooting. These families are members of a club that no one wants to join, the millions of Americans whose lives have been forever altered by gun violence. Unfortunately, we were just talking that it's not hard to find survivors in our community. All you have to do is get the word out, and all of a sudden, we have more survivors than we can even get the forum to, which is getting to be even more tragic. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, in an average year, there are over 350 workplace shootings in the U.S. Every day, on average, 100 Americans are shot and killed and 100 more are wounded. This is a public health crisis that demands urgent action. We should all be free to live and work without fear of being shot at our desks, at school, in a concert, or at church. We continue to be torn apart by senseless gun violence, and I am committed to honoring the victims and survivors of the shooting and demanding action in their honor. I hope that you all join me on Sunday, and we are Moms Demand Action, and we have local chapter meetings monthly, and we're constantly looking for new members, so I hope you guys will join me. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Those were powerful proclamations today, tonight. And we have a presentation this evening on the discussion regarding the construction of Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility, and we have Mr. Greg Boyson joining us.
Thank you, Mad Mayor, members of council. My name is Greg Boyson, I'm a city engineer. I'm also the project manager for the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility. We usually start out with an aerial that's produced by Mitchell and his crew and Victor, and so I'd like to start that for everyone. So this is January of 2019. You can see there's quite a bit of snow on the ground, of course, and then we jump right into May, and you can see the difference in the amount of construction that has happened in just those few months. This is a photograph of the existing Headworks Building that will be demolished at the conclusion of the project, and this is the new Headworks Building. And I'll get into all of the buildings in my presentation. This is the new dewatering building. You can see that most of the buildings are nearing completion. The roofs have gone on most of the buildings. The only two buildings that are left to be built vertical are the UV Building and the new Headworks Building. This is the digester support building that houses our two new digesters. And then these are our final clarifiers that will be in operation starting June 6th. This is an overview of the entire plant site. You can see down at the lower right-hand corner, that's the Santa Rita Park that will be reconditioned as part of this construction. So what I'd like to talk to you tonight about is the design improvements, the construction progress, schedule update, and the budget update. Because there are two new council members, welcome, I thought I'd go into a little bit more depth, so this will be a little bit longer than what I've done in the past, but I wanted to get into a little bit of the background and the reasoning for the project itself. The purpose of the project is to assure that the City of Durango meets the state of Colorado's regulation of 31, and it's also to meet or exceed the state's new 2019 wastewater discharge permit for our wastewater plant. And there are probably a lot of people that aren't familiar with Regulation 31 that comes from the state, so I'm just gonna read the quote out of the brochure. It states, "It is intended to implement the state's act by maintaining and improving the quality of the state's surface waters. This regulation is based on the best available knowledge to ensure the suitability of Colorado's waters for beneficial uses, including public water supplies, domestic, agricultural, industrial, and recreational uses, and the protection and propagation of terrestrial and aquatic life." So that's pretty specific on what we have to do as part of our wastewater treatment plan. Periodically, we get a new discharge permit from the state. The state issuing authority is the Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPE, the Water Quality Control Division. We were supposed to get a new permit in May of 18. Due to state staffing shortages, they didn't get that permit to us until April of this year, and it's still under review. But that date of May of 18 is important because we had to do some milestone completion of construction in order to meet that schedule. Also, in December of last year, the EPA, through the Clean Water Revolving Fund Branch, issued us a honorable mention in their PISI's recognition program. So what PISI stands for is Performance and Innovation in the SRF Creation or Creating Environmental Success. So they looked at what we were doing to our wastewater treatment plant, and they felt that it was worth giving us some recognition on the effort and improvements that we're doing to create cleaner water for the Animus River. So I thought I would bring that to everyone's attention tonight. To the right is the article that's in their magazine that they publish, and then there's the plaque that we were awarded. So this plaque will go up in the new wastewater plant when it's completed. So pretty exciting for all of us, I think. So what I'd like to do first is go through the process, just so that everybody is familiar with why we're building what we're building. This photo, this aerial, is from pre-construction in 2017, and I'll just go through how the water passes through the old plant and then go through the new plant also, just so everyone's familiar. The flow comes in from the city and goes into the Headworks Building where the majority of the large solids are removed. It then flows into the primary clarifiers where more material is removed, goes down to the aeration basin, and the aeration basin is where the biological process occurs. Everything prior to this has been mechanical, this is the biological process. I just want everyone to note the size of the aeration basin on the old plant. It'll be obvious on the next slide how small that really was. So from the aeration basin, the product goes into the final clarifiers. This is the final mechanical process before we disinfect it in the UV Building, and then it's discharged into the Animus River. As part of the process, and I'll get into more depth, we use an anaerobic digestive system to basically decompose a lot of the material. This material, when it's done, was sent over to the sledge storage building. So in the past, what we did is this liquid would be stored in this building, and then we would hire a tanker truck to come in, suck the liquid out of this building, and then we would dryland apply it to the farms around Durango. This was very costly, and we didn't have a whole lot of control over this trucking process, so as part of the new process, we decided that we would eliminate this and come up with a better process. The old plant also had a trickling filter in the admin building. Those have both been demolished for the new construction. So what I've done is I've superimposed the new construction on top of the old aerial, and you can kind of see how much increased construction and building there is compared to the old plant. Again, I'd like to just go through the process real quickly. The flow comes in from the city, goes into the Headworks Building. You can see that the Headworks Building, physically, the size is much better, bigger than the old Headworks Building. That was the round building with the glass mirrors on it. The Headworks Building removes the big solids, then it flows into the primary clarifiers. These are two of the vaults that were existing in the old plant, but we've put the domes on it, so I'm sure everyone has seen the new domes that have been installed. From the primary clarifiers, the flow goes into the aeration basin. The aeration basin is kind of what they sound like. We pump air into the fluid, and that creates a good environment for the biological process. To do that, we had to build a new blower building, which is number five, to add air into that water stream. We've also built two new additional final clarifiers. This doubles our capacity for the final clarifiers. They were installed where the old aeration basins were, so you could see physically the difference in size between the old aeration basin and the new aeration basin. So I just want to emphasize that we're getting a lot more treatment in our affluent than we were in the past. Again, from the primary clarifiers, the flow goes to the UV Building where it gets disinfected back into the Animus River. The digester now pumps the liquid sledge over to our dewatering building, which you saw on the aerial, and that process, I'll get into a little bit more, but that takes the place of where we used to use the tanker trucks to haul the liquid solids. We actually now haul solid solids. And then the liquid that comes out of the dewatering process, we pump it over into the side stream basin where we do a quick little treatment before we put it back into the aeration basin for re-treatment. So that's kind of the processes, and I know that was quick, but it kind of helps explain the actual construction. I'll go through the construction in the same process, so we'll start at the Headworks Building and end at the UV Building. So the Headworks Building is one of the last two buildings that we need to finish construction on. We've gone vertical with the precast concrete walls you can see in the left photograph. On the right photograph, you can see these are mechanical screen troughs. This is where a lot of the large solids are removed. The Headworks Building also removes the sand and grit from the liquid flow before we pass it on to the primary clarifiers. So these were the two existing tanks that we repurposed, we relined, and we brought up to current standards, but we also put domes on top of them. And those domes' purpose is to collect all the gas that comes off of the product that sits in the primary clarifiers. And that gas is pumped through activated carbon to remove all the odor. So that's our biggest odor control improvement that we've done on the entire plant. We felt that was very important. We heard during the design process that a lot of the public thought that the odor was too much to take, and so we did install the odor control process. So the purpose of the primary clarifiers is to let the velocity of the fluids slow down. This allows the sediment to settle to the bottom of the clarifier and lets everything that is floatable float to the top. We skim that material off and we pump that over to the anaerobic digesters. So I'll talk about that process a little bit later. So we removed the big stuff in the Headworks. This is the finer stuff that we're removing in the primary clarifiers, and then the flow goes into our aeration basins. So our aeration basins are 193 feet long, excuse me, 134 feet wide, and almost 19 feet deep. The old basin had a volume of about .7 million gallons, and the new basin has a total volume of 3.2 million gallons. So it's almost five times greater than our previous process. So again, we're getting better treatment, we're slowing the water down, we're giving the liquid more time to be processed. The aeration basin is a biological nutrient removal process, it's a BNR, and this one in particular is a Johannesburg process. So the aeration basin is broken into five zones, and each one of those zones creates an individual environment for the nutrient removal. So this is a microorganism process that actually feeds on the nutrients that's in the liquid, and it either creates gas or an inert solid. So there are five zones within that aeration basin, and it's sledge zone, anaerobic zone, anoxic zone, swing zone, and the aerobic zone. They all do something a little bit different. The sledge zone reduces the nitrate, the anaerobic reduces the phosphorus, the anoxic reduces the nitrogen. We have a swing zone that gives the operators the ability to either remove nitrogen or ammonia, and the way they do that or don't do that is by adding air to it. And then there's the aerobic zone, and the aerobic zone removes ammonia mostly by adding air to the fluid. So the air that's added to the aerobic area, it comes from our new blower building. So our blower building houses three high-speed microturbines that compresses and increases the velocity of that air to pump it over to the aerobic zone. We had to put this in a building, and you can see the photograph in the center lower part of the screen, that's the southern exposure of the building. The photograph on the lower right shows the mechanical, all the electrical equipment that's required to run those high-speed turbines. So you can see the amount of power that's required, and I'll talk about that a little bit later also in the presentation. And then also in the blower building, we have three of the large alum tanks. That's aluminum sulfate, and we use that for a coagulant in the settling process. The flow then goes from the aeration basin into our new final clarifiers. Again, we've doubled the size of our final clarifier process by building two new tanks. This is kind of the final mechanical process before we release the water. This water at this time is as clean, or cleaner than the water in the river. So again, the clarifier process is to let whatever's left in the water to settle out or float to the top. We skim it off and we pump it over to the aerobic digestors. So from the clarifiers, the water goes into the UV disinfection system. The building on the right side of the photographs is our old building. There was a single stream of UV lamps in that building. The new building that is shown on the left will have two streams of UV lamps. So we'll get double the disinfection, plus it will have a lot of redundancy. So from that point, it flows into the Animus River again. So we've collected all of the solids from the clarifiers and other processes. We pump it over to the anaerobic digestors. We heat and we mix the material that's in those digestors, and it creates methane gas. So we collect that methane gas and use it later on in the process. But the digester support building also houses all of the fats, oil, and grease tanks, so if we collect oil and grease from the downtown hotels, we can bring it out to the plant site, we can slowly add it to our digestors, create more methane gas, and use it in our process. The digester support building also houses all of our gas cleaning equipment, which is H2S removal, the salaxane water, and any foam that's in that gas. That building also has a lot of heat exchangers and pumps that operate the digestors. So from the methane gas that we've collected at the digestors, we send that over to three of our microturbines that create electricity, and the amount of gas that we create... And the amount of gas that we create with these three microturbines, we can create enough electricity to power those air blowers that ran the aeration basin. So we don't create enough gas to offset the total cost of electricity at the plant, but about 65% to 70% is covered by us burning that methane gas. So we're trying to keep everything renewable in the process as much as possible. The treatment complex building also houses 19 pumps. That's where a lot of the process pumping occurs, including the hot water pumps and the boiler for the rest of the treatment process. And we have another process to remove the solids out of the liquid at the treatment complex. These are RTDs, rotating drum thickeners. The material that they remove out of the liquid at this process also goes into the digesters. So you can see how important the digester process. So from the digesters, when the process is complete with the microbiology, the product is called sludge, and we send this liquid sludge over to the dewatering building. And this building is to replace the old tanker hauling that we used to do. So the dewatering building has rotating screen presses that removes the liquid from the solid. And the solids we put into trucks or into roll-off dumpsters where we can take to the Bond Ed landfill. So the landfill uses that as augmentation or amendment to their soil out there for their reconditioning. So we get good use out of that material again. The liquid that comes out of that sludge is pumped over to the side stream basin, which is a smaller aeration basin. We use that to remove the ammonia as much as possible before we put that stream back into the aeration process and we circulate it through again. So this is a recirculation process that treats the water as much as we possibly can. Another item that we've installed that people kind of forget is we've put in a new emergency generator for the plant site. So the new generator with the old generator is sufficient to power the entire plant. So we don't need LPEA if something happens. We get a lightning strike, we can still, most importantly, disinfect the liquid before it goes into the Anamis River. So a small part, but something that I thought was pretty important. So schedule, the original contract start date was May 15th of 17. I talked a little bit about that milestone. We thought that we were going to get a new discharge permit on May 1st of 18, so that's why we got the blower building and the aeration basin completed by that date. And then the final completion date was May 15th of this year. As the budget contingency is allowed, the city has requested numerous additions and changes to the project's scope for more efficiency in the operation and to replace equipment that is at the end of its useful life. As a result of these city requests, the current completion date of the project is now September 24th. So as we've added construction projects to this project or sub-projects, the contractor has asked for more time to do that, which we thought was reasonable. So that extended the completion date out of a few months. So as of today, the contract, 750 days have passed, and there are 112 days left in the contract, which means the contract is about 87% complete with 13% remaining to be done. As far as budget goes, the original budget was $59 million. The final negotiated construction contract was a little over $54 million, which left $5.2 million in construction contingency. As the city has issued 58 contract change orders and paid for miscellaneous operation expenses, when combined, what we spent so far is right at $4 million, which leaves about $1.2 million in the contingency, or about 23% of that original fund. So we've got 13% of the construction to finish, we've got 23% of our contingency left. We feel that we're in a pretty good position right now to complete the project within our budget. So just an example, some of the operation expenses included, we are paying for all the building's security access, so to make sure that the site and every building has security, so that no one can get into the plant to do any harm to the plant or themselves. Also, we had to reset the primary electrical service from LPEA, which was fairly expensive. We bought a bunch of new IT equipment for the project, and all of these expenses totaled a little over $600,000. So out of 58 of the change orders that we've issued, 51 were a request directly from the city. And to assure that the project was originally in budget, when we started this whole process, we strategically left out non-critical items. An example is, we didn't paint all of the existing buildings. We thought that that was non-critical, we didn't have to have that. So we didn't put that into the original contract. But as the project has proceeded, and we felt budget would allow, we've added 51 of these additional change orders. And a few of those, just as an example of the 51, is we upgraded the Boto II sanitary sewer lift station. By doing this, we were able to eliminate a lift station, and so we don't have to pay the electricity or the manpower or the maintenance on that lift station. And those cost savings will offset that $573,000 expense, and the payout is, it's pretty far out, but it's still a payout. So we thought that was a very good expense to have Archer Western complete. We also built a new IT room, server room. We painted the existing buildings, like I mentioned. We had to do some asbestos abatement on the existing headworks and sledge storage building. And then we replaced a lot of the old equipment and piping. So we replaced the polymer feed system, the master dewatering pumps, the return activated sledge pipes, the thickened waste activated pipes. So all these, this equipment was 30-plus years old. We thought that we were going to have to replace it in the near future anyway, so we thought since we have the contractor on site, we have the funds available, it made perfect sense to go ahead and get these changes made.
And these were part of the change orders?
These were all part of the 51 change orders that we requested. They weren't part of the original contract, but they were something that we thought that we could afford and it was a proper time to do. Couple things we added that we thought would increase the processing width is we added a hot water flushing system to the RSP building. So that's where the primary clarifiers were, where they take the solid materials from the flow stream and we pump it over to the digesters. That's typically laden with a lot of grease, which coagulates in the pipe. Flushing it with hot water made a lot of sense to us, so we included that in the project. And then we installed a higher coating on the digester. We thought that by putting a better coating on the inside of the digester, the life of that digester would last up to 15, 20 years longer than the original coating. So those are just some of the examples of where we've spent our money. I'd be glad to give you a whole list of the 51 if you would like to see it. So we've gone through the process, we talked a little bit about construction, the budget, and the schedule. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I always ask you about the odor retention system.
Yes, sir.
Is that fully functional now? Is that...
It is. It is. And I kind of glossed over that quickly, but in front of the photograph with the primary clarifiers, there are two box car-looking vaults, and those are full of activated carbon. And so we actually suck the air off of the primary clarifiers with these big fans. We push it through the activated carbon and it discharges into the atmosphere, cleaned of all orders.
So whatever odor is present at the site today is pretty much what the community will experience?
I think it'll get a little bit better. I mean, we're still working on some of the process from the old plant. So I think when we get the new final clarifiers going and some of the fine tuning of the process, I think the odors will even be a little bit less. I don't think they're that noticeable, especially since we've turned the odor control system on.
When did you turn that on?
Last week.
First of all, thank you for this presentation, and it's really interesting to get the 65% to 70% of the electricity being generated in-house. That's great. I'm curious about training, because I see all this, and I'm wondering what the staff, what the professional development will be for them or the training so that they're successful in implementing this.
So we have two training processes. Each piece of equipment has their supplier that comes in and they start up the equipment. And at that time, they provide all of the staff the training on that particular equipment. We also have our design consultant that comes into town and explains how all of that equipment works together to create the product that we're looking for. So we get training from the actual manufacturer and also the person that did the design on the plant.
And then after that initial day or whatever it is of training, is there a relationship where you can call back again on some kind of advice if needed?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that goes without saying. Everything is at least a year in warranty, and we have a good relationship with our design consultant, so I don't have a problem with that also. And there's additional training that we can pay for. We can send our staff to, you know, individual training on either process or equipment, and they're readily available.
Great, thank you.
Is the water coming into the system tested, you know, the water that flows in to help it work, and then the water that flows out tested so that you know that what's, I mean, how often is the water that flows out tested?
Daily, all day long.
Right, and so you can, you always know that if what's coming in is of a certain quality, you know that you're putting better quality water out into the river.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Again, the quality that we put in the river is usually cleaner than the river.
You might mention that the certification the plant operators need to have too, to follow up on?
Right. All of, this is a Class B plant, but all of our plant operators are Class A operators, so they have to have education and testing and experience to get those certifications. It's the same with our collection and distribution team. Those all have certifications. Obviously, they're different, but, and same with our water treatment plant folks. So everybody is well-qualified and certified to operate the equipment in the plant.
What about an update on the administrative offices that was removed?
So we bid the admin building and the vac truck building. Those were originally part of the scope of the plant, and we had to remove those in order to get within our budget. Again, those were incidentals. We felt in order to meet the EPA and the state discharge permits, we needed to get the plant in operation. So we pulled those two buildings out of the project. We went out to bid, we did some modifications to the designs, mostly for interior staff requests. That bid came in a little bit over our budget, so we've been in negotiations with the low bid contractor. We have a meeting tomorrow to go over what his final numbers are, but they're looking pretty positive.
And where's the money for this come out of? Does it come out of the sewer reserve and the water reserve, or where does it come from for the administration building?
It comes out of the enterprise fund for collection and distribution for wastewater.
For the sewer fund essentially?
The sewer fund, yes, ma'am.
And so that was budgeted into that?
Correct. There was a budget for those buildings. And you can help me if I'm mistaken.
Yeah, I think it's split between water and wastewater.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay, great, sorry.
Because I thought it was $4 million something out of each one of them, yeah. Okay, all right, excellent.
I might just add, you know, this is great, thanks Greg for that presentation, and congratulations on the award from Pisces. That's a, for those of us in the construction business, that doesn't come easily, or it's a pretty significant recognition. I'll also remind you that what city council's role was to follow, councillor, and those were these question about sustainability issues. That was a big priority. Of course, this whole thing evolved out of the fact that the CDHPNE gave us a, basically a do-something-or-get-off-the-pot kind of notification that we were in viola, we would become in violation of several environmental laws. So that was the impetus of this whole thing. But in that, we took this opportunity to become a much more sustainable plant and provide something new to the community, which was part of what I assume the award from Pisces was all about. But councillor, council's role in this, I mean, we came to, had several, several presentations, and a lot of dollars and cents considerations regarding the Johannesburg process as what, basically, an A or B type of process, that what are the advantages and disadvantages of each of those kinds of process? The heat exchangers, and the creation, which creates creation of electricity for 65%, 70% of the operation through the methane-powered turbines. Those were ads that were requested by council effectively to those members that were, about two different councils in the past that made these critical decisions to get to where we are today. The dewatering process too, one fixed the transit problem that was really a kind of third-world effort historically. And the one I hadn't heard about till tonight was the generator, the 100% generator, which would power this plant in the event that a lot of electric ever went down. This is probably the most critical thing that the city of Durango does is treat sewer, because that allows everything. I mean, you can do without a water plant for a while, but you can't do without a sewer plant without mass chaos in your community. So that was a, that was a great ad. Thanks for doing that, especially in these days of cyber attacks. It is a real-world thing that where, you know, whether it's Russian trolls or whoever, if they wanted to attack municipal, at least throughout the country, on an ad hoc basis, that would be how they would get us, attack our sewer treatment plant. So that's, that's very cool. 87% done now. I'm reminded from your presentation that in any well-conceived construction project, you do strategic deletions from the budget in order, so you have a contingency, that you can selectively add those contingency items back into a budget if the project is well-managed like this one has been, and you have anything left at the end. So you can logistically add back in those things that you previously deleted. So those hard decisions to cut things out of the budget early on are not necessarily a sign that people never see them. And that's effectively, we've got really well-managed on your part, so thank you for that. That's all I have.
Any more questions from councillor? Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the update. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is allowed, is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve items that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councillor requests that an item be removed from the agenda. Items that are removed from the consent will be considered under Agenda Item Number Six. Ms. Phillips, can you please read the consent agenda for our...
Item 4.1 is approval of the minutes for the joint study session on May 14th, 2019. 4.2 is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of May 21st, 2019. Item 4.3 and 4.4 are discussion and possible action items. 4.3 concerns resolution R.201925 authorizing additional appropriation to the airport fund and to the airport capital projects fund for the airport land acquisition project in excess of the amount budgeted in the 2019 budget. Item 4.4 concerns resolution R.201926 approving an additional appropriation to the water capital fund for the replacement of water line at 31 Parker Avenue, Durango, Colorado. Item 4.5 is a request for public hearing to consider an amendment to the Purple Cliffs at Escalante Plan Development with a proposed date of June 17th, 2019. And item 4.6 is final approval of ordinance O.201915 authorizing the acquisition of certain property for airport purposes and in connection therewith authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and other related documents heretofore, authorizing officials of the city to take all action necessary to carry out the transactions contemplated hereby, redifying actions previously taken, and providing other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Do we have any councillor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda tonight?
I would, actually. I would ask just to remove the airport discussions, so 4.3 and 4.6, to allow anybody in the audience that might want to have a question around that or a comment around that. And I also do have a question on that as well.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, withstanding the removal of items four point three and four point six?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call?
Councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Yussa?
Yes.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Would you like to? Is there anybody that wanted to, in any public interest in the discussion? Can they be allowed to speak on that? If there's any, I don't know that there is, but.
Do we have any public that would like to speak on items four point three regarding the airport?
So, thank you. I just, I thought the suggestion last week about the city possibly being able to use some of its resources to create a loan, I thought it was a creative idea. And while I'm not proposing that, I wondered and I wanted to ask either the city attorney or the city manager, is that something that could legally be done for in future efforts? I just was curious about that idea.
Well, I think we have.
And you may not have the answer today.
Yeah, I think it depends on the circumstances. You know, sometimes, you know, this is an enterprise fund, obviously, so we would have to meet taper. Those are complicated transactions. They sound simple, but they can be complicated in the sense that we want to make sure that they, the both funds, where it's coming from and where it's going to comply with taper. So we would engage with D. Weiser and his firm, you know, to investigate that if, if that opportunity ever came up in advance to review. I think you heard Kim Crawford say that it's theoretically possible to do that under certain circumstances, but I think it isn't one size fits all and I think it would be an individual call as to whether or not that made sense.
If I might have, I'd like to invite you to the next airport commission. The board, the commission is just not a city Durango function, it's a multi-city and county function and there's bankers and there's airport people and there's architects and engineers and there's economic development people that are much more astute about these financing techniques. And quite simply put, there was no fund need for public money to be used for this project, period. So the consideration of that kind of financing is moot. And I'd like to have Tony and the rest of the commission explain that to you very eloquently, much more eloquently than me, because it's, it might be consideration for other projects, but with the airport, it's a different fund, there's no need for use of any other general fund monies for that airport, probably ever. So that's okay.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just felt that it was a creative idea and I wondered if it's something we could do in future.
It might be something, but the proposal was that we were misusing funds. That individual that night was suggesting that, that we hadn't considered that and quite honestly, I can tell you that there's been months of consideration of all the options for financing for that particular acquisition. So that person, quite honestly, was misinformed and I'm not fully knowledgeable about the funding process for that facility.
Okay. But I think. Great, the city attorneys answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so.
I might mention the next meeting, we're going to be at CML, so it'll be have to be the July meeting of the Airport Commission, which is the third Thursday, I believe, so.
All right.
I'll make sure it's on the agenda for you.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number four point three and four point six? Can we do them simultaneously, Mr. Nelson?
You can.
And I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Yussa?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to public participation. If you have not signed up for public participation and you'd like to join us, please sign up now. This section of the agenda is set aside for individuals who would like to provide comments or ask questions about items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Want to call you forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record. We are limiting comments to three minutes and at two and a half minutes, the city manager will kindly wave his hand and warn you that your time is coming up. We don't mean to be distracting, but we are trying to run efficient meetings. That said, we very much care what you have to say and we appreciate you joining us in our meeting. We do not normally comment from the diest, but if, if time allows at the end and if a councillor would like to say something, we may at the end. If I could please have Joel Arnold come up, please?
Good evening.
Oh, if you could please join us right up here at the podium.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I'm representing the Four Corners.
And name and address, please.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Joel Arnold, in twenty-three fifty East Main Avenue or Main Avenue.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm representing the Four Corners Gem and Mineral Club this evening. The Four Corners Gem and Mineral Club is a nonprofit, all volunteer organization which strives to educate the public in rocks and minerals and teach the public how to cut and polish stones and make jewelry. The clubhouse is the turquoise building located in Brookside Park near the new Chamber of Commerce building. We own the building and the city, we lease the footprint from the city of Durango. The clubhouse is wheelchair accessible. We just finished remodeling our bathroom to make it wheelchair accessible. The club was founded in nineteen forty-seven. Some of the early members of the club were Bill and Olga Little. Olga Little was the famous jack packer woman who used burrows to pack supplies to the mines in the Plata Canyon, winter and summer. The clubhouse is completed, has a complete lapidary shop to cut and polish stones and a complete jewelry shop to fabricate jewelry. The club has frequent open shop hours throughout the week when members can come and work on their projects. The club offers classes in the lapidary arts, cutting and polishing stones and jewelry, jewelry making classes, as well as precious metal clays, enameling and wire wrapping. The club also offers field trips throughout the year to collect rocks, study geology and learning about our mining heritage in the San Juans. The club puts on the Gem and Mineral Show at the fairgrounds in July. This year's show, July twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth, is our sixty-sixth annual show. The show features sixty dealers from around the U.S. and Mexico. We have educational displays and activities for children. The show funds our operational costs throughout the year as well as the scholarship for Fort Lewis College Geo Sciences student. We advertise the show throughout the southwest and closer to the show around the Four Corners. The club collects city and county sales taxes from the dealers and files taxes with the city and county. The show brings in revenue to other businesses in Durango such as motels and restaurants. Last year, we had three thousand people attend our show. The Four Corners Gem and Mineral Club is one of the best-kept secrets in Durango. It's a real gem. We strive to provide a valuable service to the citizens of Durango and trust that the city of Durango will continue to support our club and our mission.
Thank you, Joel.
Yeah, and I have some brochures here if you would like to pass those down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sweetie Marbury? I think you know the routine.
My name is Sweetie Marbury. I live at twenty-two fifty-six West Second Avenue. I started coming to city council in nineteen eighty-seven, so I, I thought I wouldn't change my pattern. I saw on the consent agenda, the agenda later tonight, that one A will be in ordinance. And so I wanted to really thank the voters for passing one A because it'll make an important difference in all of our neighborhoods and they recognize the needs of the city by supporting one A. I also looked at the, the agenda and noticed that the airport was on there. And I, I know that the purchase of this land will make the airport not landlocked and there's so much future potential. And so that's another really great reason to celebrate the purchase of the airport land and what the potential for the future will be. We know that our airport is a regional airport for visitors from across the United States as well as European nations. And the third thing I'd like to talk about, when I came back to Durango from a trip, I saw that Larry Valdez Way, the sign, has been installed at Santa Rita Park. And I've had calls from Vietnam veterans and they are so excited to receive this. Larry Valdez was a Durango High School graduate. He served in the Vietnam War. He, and during nineteen sixty-eight, he was awarded the Silver Star. And I also called his son to let his son know that the sign has been installed. So there's lots of great things to celebrate in Durango and I thank you for allowing me to share some of those. And congratulations for the ordinances and the purchase and the acquisition of the airport land. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Hamner?
Hello, council. I'm Jeffrey Hamner. I live at seventeen White Cliff Drive. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Organic Parks Movement and Momentum. I am an excited new father of a doggy daughter and she's been with me since September and I'm just so pleased to have so many parks for us to visit and meet other dogs. And I am also a little concerned that we could be doing things better. I was very much inspired by the efficiency and the environmental consciousness of what was presented earlier with the water treatment plant and I'd like to keep the ball rolling in that direction. I would love to see some more parks. In fact, I'd love to move to that all the parks become organic, but I'd love to emphasize kind of a prideful sign of sorts that says, this park is organically managed. And I know we have one park that is and that's Brookside. And I know there's one more, but I, I'm not sure which one that is. Does, do any of you know?
Quite a few, actually.
Do we have a list?
Seven.
Seven.
But I don't know the exact names. I wish.
I think I might have them. You keep going and I'll tell you.
Okay, great, thank you. And I also care for the kids of Durango and I recently got hired at Juniper Elementary School as their art teacher and I noticed they frequently use the Mason Center, they frequently use Buckley Park, and I have never seen so many sick children and I'm not sure for certain that it's because of how our, our facilities are treated, but I have a feeling that it has something to do with the chemicals. And the chemicals that we are treating our facilities, our parks that we enjoy so much are deadly toxic. If you do some research on some of the chemicals that are being sprayed on our lands and then being, people are being told not to use these parks for only twenty-four hours and then there's soccer games twenty-four hours later or just after that. And I went and recently watched a soccer game up at the Fort Lewis College facilities and I had some brand-new shoes on with white soles and when I walked away, they were this beautiful teal color, but I knew that that wasn't natural. And I saw little girls chasing butterflies barefoot and rolling all over the place, kids throwing their water bottles down on the grass and the ground and then drinking out of them. And here I am with teal soles to my shoes and it just gave me this sense of, wow, this is not where kids should be playing soccer and falling on the ground and putting their water bottles and then drinking out of them. And so I just have a concern for the well-being of the users of the parks that we are allowing kids to play on twenty-four hours after deadly chemicals are being sprayed. And there in past years hasn't been much research, but research is coming out now. And so I encourage the council to do some of their own research to see exactly what chemicals we are using on our parks and the alternatives and what a difference that could make. So thank you so much for hearing me out and a pleasure to see some new council members and thanks so much for listening.
Mr. Hamner, I apologize to, I'll have to get back to you on the specific parks. My, my stuff is not organized as well as I thought.
I think I have the same list.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's combined with some old data and I want to make sure I get the right one back to him. I will write to you.
Well, thank you for not giving me incorrect information.
Of course. I think, you know, we can talk about this in our reports and actions as well, but we'll do a summary of the seven organic parks that exist today and those, the, the schedule for spraying, which is twice, twice per year.
That's a great idea.
On our non-organic parks. It's not every week or every, it's not frequent spraying. It's once in the spring and once in the fall is what, so anyway, we'll be glad to, and we welcome any research in that regard and we're certainly aware of new, new developments and thanks for bringing this to us. Appreciate it.
Awesome, and an emphasis on the signs of the, the parks that are organically treated. And I think that would be a sense of pride for our community members.
Certainly would.
Thank you very much. And Marcos Wisner, please.
I should be promoted.
Thanks for joining us.
You're good.
All right, um, yeah, so I haven't had a chance to.
Name and address.
Sorry, Marcos Wisner, Two Stewart Place. Haven't had a chance to make it to one of these city council meetings yet, but this is, it's great to hear like one A passing through and I just want to, you know, thank the community and everyone, well, the previous council for getting that on the ballot and the community for voting that through. I think it's something that's really going to help push our community forward and just uphold the integrity of our operations because I think our staff is doing a very good job with what they have been doing with this community. I think this water reclamation facility is a perfect example of how well and how efficient they are operating on some very complex, heavy-loaded projects. And then just a congratulations just of getting through this winter. It was, it was a rough winter. You know, I think Ron did a great job, you know, with organizing, coordinating the plow trucks and just that, that, that whole end of things to just keep the roads clear to some degree and, and uphold, upholding those roads to where we could at least do our day-to-day task. And then I'm just really excited to see Tony doing a great job with the airport. I think, you know, he's, he's done a great job with the enterprise fund, the things making money. We don't need to pull from any general funds and I think, I'd love to see that place grow. If we can bring in another airport, that means more competition, that means cheaper airfares for our community and everybody. I think we'd all like to see, you know, Delta or, you know, American Airlines or someone set up shop in that place. And I just look forward to being a part of more of these meetings and seeing the direction this council goes with us. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Okay, moving on to public hearings. So we have one legislative public hearing tonight. Please note the city council previously directed staff to put this, a notice of public hearing on the agenda. The issues that we deal with in this section of the agenda are of legislative or policy-related nature. These public hearings are an opportunity for citizens to provide formal into, into, formal input into our public decision-making process and it's organized intentionally to ensure transparency and fairness. The public hearing that we have tonight is a public hearing to consider text amendments to the Storm Drainage Design Criteria Manual. And with that, let's start with the presentation. Mr. Hall, please, thank you.
Good evening, councillors. Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. We were going to request a continuance of this item. The agenda packet upon a review this afternoon, we felt that it wasn't adequate to really allow for a kind of a robust review and discussion about the item. So what we're going to, we're requesting a continuance to the seventeenth. We'll, we'll bolster the agenda documentation. We'll also have a presentation from our stormwater staff and we'll get you everything you need to have a good dialogue about the issue, but we just weren't ready today at kind of a late notice and I'm sorry we didn't get that word to you earlier.
No problem. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, you need a motion to continue.
Motion to extend?
Yeah, motion to continue it to the, you said seventeenth, Kevin?
Correct.
Can we have a motion to continue to the seventeenth, please?
I'll move to, move the proposed LUDC text amendment approval to the seventeenth.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Broke?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bettine?
Yes.
Councillor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Yussa?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to introduction of ordinances. Dirk, can we have a reading of the ordinance?
Yes.
And a number, please.
You can. This is ordinance O. two thousand nineteen dash sixteen and this is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for purposes of implementing the half-cent increase in sales and use tax authorized for levy and collection through the passage of question one A at the general municipal election held on April second, two thousand nineteen, setting forth limitations on the expenditure of funds received as a result of such increase in sales and use taxes consistent with the requirements of said question one A and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Discussion from council, motion? No discussion?
No.
Okay.
No, nothing?
So can we have a motion to approve? So can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 02019-16.
I'll second.
May we have a roll call, please? Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burkey?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Council reports and actions. Let's see if we have any updates that we want to share at this time. I know that I believe Mr. LeBlanc has an update for us on facilitators.
I do.
One for each of us?
Yes. I'll wait till you, each have a copy.
Thank you.
Okay, the packet that you have has a summary sheet that I'll review in a minute. And there's several attachments which I will review with you at this time. So the assignment was to try to secure consulting services as directed by the council. And I would, for the public, mention that the city charter, Article Five, Article Four, Administration and Personnel, Section 15, states the following. Section 15, purchasing, the city manager shall direct a central purchasing operation, which shall be responsible for the procurement of goods and services for all departments, offices, and agencies. The procedures utilized by the purchasing department shall comply with standards normally used in municipal and governmental entities, provided, however, that nothing contained herein shall be construed as limiting the power of the City of Durango from entering into a joint purchasing agreement with any governmental entity. So the council directed this effort to establish a process for council goal-setting and to establish an evaluation process for three direct reports to the city council. A request for qualifications, known as an RFQ, was issued on May the 30th. And that RFQ is attached. And it is the one with the yellow highlight on the top page, which indicates when the material is due, which was noon today. The RFQ was sent to a list of people and consultants that we had on our availability list, that these are people who have reached out to us. Or these were names that members of the council suggested. So each of those names, June Ramos, Anna Poole, David Marvin, Suzanne Fair, Patrick Rondinelli, Jack Morrison, Phil Bryson, Marcia Porter Norton, and the Exetor Group, received the RFQ. The Grants and Contracts Manager received three responses by the deadline. And they were Confluence Leadership Group, Jay Ramos, and Executive Savvy. In addition, I should note to the council, Phil Bryson is already working for the city and has been previously vetted by the Finance Department, as is June Ramos Consulting. The city also has access to the Department of Local Affairs. And as a service to local governments, DOLA field reps facilitate a variety of meetings, including goal-setting. Patrick Rondinelli, who's our regional DOLA rep, has offered to be a facilitator. And DOLA is prohibited, since it's a state office. It's prohibited from responding to RFQs. So attached, I thought it would be helpful that the Finance Department put this together. There is a sheet that looks like this. And we've listed the respondents, including Patrick Rondinelli, and the cost per day and the cost of travel expenses. So they range from zero to 3,500 per day. The submittals are all attached. And the fiscal impact is it ranges from zero to 3,500 per day. And this addresses the current council goal three, which is to demonstrate government performance through efficient, effective, and innovative city operations. And there is no staff recommendation.
Thank you. It's very thorough, and I appreciate it. Just to confirm, Mr. Nelson, we won't be taking any action at this time, correct? We can discuss that at a future opportunity when we have the ability to set an agenda.
It's not set for any action, that's right.
Right. So, so I think we can just take this at home with us and review it?
Yeah, absolutely.
And discuss it further at a later date as a team.
Excellent. When, when, you know, the process of getting back, I guess we need to enter into agreement with these folks at some time, maybe.
Yes.
This is sort of time critical, so.
Agreed.
And scheduling opportunities are closing quickly, so.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe a week or so that we could give staff instruction to execute a contract?
That sounds great. Maybe we could add it to our agenda for our study session next Tuesday? And agendaize that for, just to confirm that?
Sounds appropriate. Let's see what we have time for.
Let's do it. Okay, let's do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. 6:11. Any other council updates?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Animus River Days. We went down to that over the weekend. And I wanted to just give a big shout-out to the staff and the volunteers and the organizers. It was another large community event. And people, quite a few people had smiles on their faces. I also wanted to ask, today we received a San Juan Basin public, public health, kind of a state of the living conditions in the community. And I was thinking about it with two things. One, as the gentleman Joel Arnold spoke, I was thinking about, could we add a study session or an onboarding at a minimum for someone like me? Could we get an update on both the San Juan Basin's view of the organic management or of the chemicals that are being used? And then could we get a shortened version of this rollout that they provided, the plan, so that we had a few chance to ask some questions about their findings?
Specific to the parks, I'm sorry?
No, there was two things. It was specific to the parks. I'd like to find out about what they, you know, what they evaluated and what their findings were. And I think there's been some time since the last report was done. But then I also, they sent on the living conditions in the community that impact health. And they talked about it being affordable housing, substance abuse, poverty, other things besides exercise and nutrition.
So are you wanting the San Juan Basin help to do a presentation?
A study session.
A study session, okay.
Or if everybody else feels that they're up to speed on it, then I would just ask for an onboarding for me.
There's also a presentation possibility at a city council meeting, too, right?
Yeah.
For the sewer plant.
I think it's bigger than a, than a study session. I think the council meeting is a good. I know they'd be happy to come and present. And we can ask specific questions about organic parks. But just as you've suggested, this is new information. And I'd probably like to have this forum to educate the public and as well as us at the same time.
I think great.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So if my calendar isn't wrong and days haven't passed too quickly, last week was the reinvestment and redevelopment symposium.
Yes, it was.
That the city and regional areas municipalities helped put together. And it was incredibly informative about URAs, which are urban renewal authorities, as well as several other ways of accessing funds and promoting economic development and creating change in the areas that we want to see revitalized. So it was very exciting. It was very well done. And staff did a great job. And all the presenters were wonderful, so thank you.
Excellent.
I'd like to echo that. That was, I think, one of the most impactful meetings and gathering of not only individuals from our community, but Grand Junction Montrose and all the surrounding, yeah, Pogosa Springs. It was a, we're finding that urban renewal funding is a mechanism that can be used by large cities. You hear about it in urban metro areas, but it's totally applicable to small communities as well. So that was pretty exciting and staff. We hosted it along with Downtown Colorado, Inc., DCI. And it was really a great step forward in achieving our long-term goals. Another groundbreaking, tomorrow I'll be speaking for Mayor Youssef at the groundbreaking of the senior residences at Three Springs. This is a Volunteers of America project where they were able to competitively get low-income housing tax credits. And through a partnership with the city, we provided the land through an agreement with Three Springs. And the tribe is, now we're able to build 53 units of senior housing, low-income housing on that property out in Three Springs. So if you're excited about seeing a new building come to fruition, the groundbreaking will be tomorrow at noon out in Three Springs on Wilson Gulch Road.
And I wanted to echo the same comments about the conference we all attended last week. It was pretty awesome. And to also recognize the staff, especially the planning and business development staff of the city, they did such an exceptional job of hosting, presenting, and providing a forum for our community. And we're, I think, all looking forward to having further conversation about that. Also, listen for me and Jack Lewellen on our new co-radio show. We're doing city updates on a fairly regular basis throughout the summer. Something new to try to get some of the communication, lines of communication more open and available to as many folks as possible. So our first one was recorded on Monday, and it was really fun to do. And I look forward to hearing your feedback.
Great. And the study session for onboarding this Wednesday, tomorrow, 2:30 PM here in the city hall chambers is on homelessness. And just I found it very interesting that we're giving away free mulch for anyone that's interested, this, starting this Friday until it is gone. Material can be loaded by residents, or the city will have a loader to help load into personal vehicles from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the top of Tech Center Drive by the, it's at the FanDoll Dump Site. So I guess the mulch is a combination of material from the tree trimmings from spring and fall cleanup, as well as Christmas trees. So now is the season to spruce up the yards. I thought you guys might be interested. We currently do not have any study sessions scheduled for June 25th. Councilors, letting you know. This, this could change, but as of right now, we don't have an item on the agenda. So we are currently, have no meeting that night. And with that, I'm going to move on to Section 12 Administrative. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nelson, please.
Yes, this, you heard earlier that we had the second reading of the ordinance on all of the financing for the airport. We did. So this, this is the last sort of piece of that. There are two documents here. One is an assignment of the purchase and sale agreement. That is to, when we originally entered the contract to purchase the property at the airport, the city and the county entered that contract together. Due to the details of the financing, we need to assign that contract in a fashion that allows the city to assign it to a trustee bank. So that's the first document that needs to be approved. That, again, is sort of an administrative item, getting it so that we can, transfer it to the bank to hold during the term of the lease purchase. And then the property will come back to the city. And the second document is the IGA between the city and the county. And as you know, the city and the county jointly operate the airport and jointly, actually in common, own all the property at the airport in undivided 50% interest. So this agreement states that the county consents to the city entering the financing, having the trustee bank hold title. And then when the city gets title back, we agree then to deed an undivided 50% of that airport property that's being acquired to the county, so that it creates that same ownership that the rest of the property at the airport is held. So those are the two items. I understand that the county commissioners approved both of these items this morning at their regular business session. So I'd take questions on either one of those. But, so I, I think that you could, if you wanted to, approve those separately by motion or because they're related, you could approve them in one motion if you, if you so desire.
Thank you.
And this, this closing is scheduled for June 17th. So kind of a big day to get all the documents together. It's looking really good for that, for that closing date. So I think we're all set.
Excellent. Questions, comments?
So these are two, these become two motions?
If you would like, either way, you can do two or.
I have no further discussion myself, except for that clarification.
Except I like it. I'm glad we're doing this.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Can I have a motion then?
I'd make a motion to, number first, to approve the intergubernal agreement between the City of Durango and La Plata County concerning the future transfer of title of certain real property being acquired for airport purposes.
Second. Roll call, please. Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Burkey?
Yes.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Second motion?
With that, I'd like to also make a motion to approve an assignment of purchase and sale agreement and consent to assignment between the City of Durango, La Plata County, and Coinonia Properties LLC concerning the acquisition of certain real estate property being acquired for airport purposes consistent with the lease purchase financing.
Second. Okay, we have a couple seconds. May we have a roll call? Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Bettine Burkey?
Yes.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, we'll look to you for 12.1.2.
Okay. As you know, council requested that this item be agendized for an executive session for the purposes of discussing specific legal questions with the city attorney under 2464024B at your study session on last Tuesday. So at this point, I have prepared a potential motion for both of the executive sessions and if you want to pass those along. So if you so desire, I have included in those draft motions the details that, you know, that I just stated and some potential items to be discussed in this conference for legal advice. So if you're inclined, again, to do that, I have included also the people to be included in the session. These are just samples. But again, following, I think, what we're aware of at this point, if you're inclined, a motion such as the one listed under item one would be appropriate to enter in executive session.
Thank you. Questions or comments or motion from council?
I can move to go into executive session for the purposes of conducting a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions as permitted under CRS Section 2464024B. The executive session to include the mayor, members of council, and the city attorney. The topics for discussion will include rights and obligations related to personnel issues, a matter involving potential liability, and open records issues.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, any discussion?
Discussion.
Yeah, I'm, I guess this is new territory for council. And I'm not sure how one leads into the other. But I'm not sure there's need for the second one until we have the first one. If that makes sense, is that, that's what I'd like to glean out of the first one.
So would the process be that if we, if we vote to go into the first one, we go do it? And then we come back and we talk about the second, whether we vote to go?
They're completely independent.
Right, exactly. So that, yeah, so that answers that question. So that, yeah, so that answers that question.
And either one, to go into executive session, as I've mentioned before, would require a vote of two-thirds of the council, which would mean four affirmative votes. But that's correct, they're totally independent issues.
Thank you.
Further discussion from council? Ms. Phillips, may we have a roll call?
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Burkey?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
I'm guessing we have two minutes left.
Sure. I think that's, I move.
Can we leave?
Oh, yeah. Because we got to come back.
Yes.